... of silence. Thank you, and if you could turn and face a flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. You may be seated. Could we have the roll call of council members, please?
Lehman?
Here.
Podak?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Grine?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
All right, we're all here, minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to approve. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
I guess I need to abstain. Do I need to abstain because I wasn't here? Yeah, I watched the video.
Lake?
Abstain.
All right, that motion carries. The minutes of the previous meeting have been approved. Communications?
I have none.
All right, reports of the committee's finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the Finance Committee met at 5:30 PM in council chambers. The Finance Director presented and reviewed the July 2025 financial documents. So noted are that the general fund has a $10.6 million unencumbered balance as of July 31st. Total funds unencumbered are $15.8 million. He noted that we are doing well on our revenue and staying within budget at this point in the year. He has sent out a banking RFP and received seven proposals in response, which are currently being reviewed. An update was provided regarding the City of Fosteria Financial Planning and Supervision Committee Commission's meeting, which was held on July 23rd, and its discussions about transitioning out of fiscal emergency. The committee passed a motion to cancel the Finance Committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. And during the miscellaneous portion of the meeting tonight, I'll be recommending that council hold a budget work session with council at that date and time, which was November 18th at 5:30 PM. The committee agreed to begin drafting two policies related to carryover balances, a general fund policy to establish guidelines on appropriate fund balance levels, and enterprise fund policy, which deal with water and sewer funds, to provide direction on reserve levels and rate considerations. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 16th at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Public Affairs Committee.
Just a couple of events to report on. Latino Fest is happening this Saturday, August 23rd, from 2:00 to 11:00 PM in downtown Fosteria. It will feature a beer tent, over 15 food and drink trucks, bounce houses, kid games, and live band performances. The Fosteria Community Arts Council's Summer Concert Series will be held this Sunday, August 24th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at Foundation Park, and will feature a full instrumentation big band named Night Session from the greater Toledo area. And the public open house concerning the South Town Street grade separation will take place a week from today, on Tuesday, August 26th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Fosteria Learning Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Law and Ordnance Committee.
The Law and Ordnance Committee met this evening. The committee has closed all outstanding issues, including firearms ordinance updates and electric bike scooter regulation inquiries. Deb Tyson asked about the Tiffin Main Street study currently being conducted and expressed her concerns regarding traffic safety with the ongoing ODOT Lidle Street repaving project. The Law and Ordnance Committee will meet again on Tuesday, September 16th, at 5:15 here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving into Report of Officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank all the citizens for the patience they are showing with the Lidle Street project. I think all of us have been stopped by trains, but when it all gets finished, it'll be a nice road and should service for years to come. Also, Columbia Gas began their project at downtown today. And we have a representative from Columbia Gas who will be describing the project and answering questions for us tonight.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, so we'll jump back to part of what you were talking about, Amy, and I know that kind of worry, which is our legislation concerning the signs we put up that says this light is under review for study. So we didn't have a sign that said, hey, this light's already been studied and is going to get taken down. So we put that up as a forewarning to folks that this had been part of a ODOT safety study where they came and they put, they did traffic studies in all directions and all those intersections. Their recommendation to the city at that time was that all those lights go to four-way stops. So under their recommendation, that is where we're choosing to go. So part of our process is to put those signs up until you pass the legislation. When you pass the legislation, we will put those lights on flash red in all four directions for maybe two weeks. And then at some point, during that same time, the signs will, the permanent stop signs will go up. And then we'll bag that light for a little while, and then it'll come down. That way, there's plenty of warning that that light's coming down, but that's the sign that we had that said that it was under study, so that's the one we put up, so everybody knew that at some point, something was going to change there. So just try to clear that up a little bit for everyone. And then I think you may have all seen, and probably knowing Maddie, she sent you all out information about, and remember, this is a $1.1 million grant the city received, a U.S. forestry grant. Where, because it was paused for a little bit and some questions on how long it'll continue, we decided that the best move for the city was to get tree service under contract to do part of the nuts and bolts of that, of that would, that will help us out for quite some time. And so we used our very fancy procurement policy that allows us to put out for people that would be in that kind of business, that would give us proposals to do the things that we wanted to do. Davey did turn out to be the company that was chosen. And so what we're planning on doing with Davey is a complete tree inventory of every tree that's on the right-of-way throughout the city. So they do an inventory, they'll do a hazard tree survey so that we can immediately remove hazardous trees. Part of the grant also had some contractor money where we could contract to have those trees taken down. We also did a procurement policy to study some prices of, I think roughly 10 trees, to find the company that would do that. Bottomor Tree Service is the one that came out as our tree service to do that work and to continue working with us on other projects. So, and then another part, important part of this project is they'll be doing a tree planting plan for the community. And those will be done under state and federal guidelines of not putting any light species trees within a certain distance of others so that if there is a bug that goes through, it doesn't wipe out a whole neighborhood of trees, and perhaps it can't jump to the next. So with that, the beauty of that is we'll then be eligible for state and federal grants to plant new trees with our tree planting plan. So we met with them today, I think we had a really great meeting. They have, they have pretty, pretty cool software and a program that we're looking at considering using where we will be able to, those trees will live in that program, we can track them. And anytime anybody calls about them, we can look at the last time we looked at them, what kind of shape they were in. And I think this is, this is going to be, in the end, a great program for the city. They expect to wrap up sometime in September. So it's a pretty exciting time for us because it's something that will help us out when these storms come rolling in that we get quite frequently. And then just to touch on what the mayor had talked about, we did, we did get some photos today and some word that they have started actually paving on that project down there on Lidle Street, which kind of surprised me because I knew they had a lot of concrete work to do. But, you know, that's another, another interesting project where our portion of that is, is $711,000, give or take. So if you take that was an urban paving grant, is what they call it through ODOT. So you have to estimate that, you know, that is at least a 3-point-something million-dollar project that we're getting for our portion. Plus, we did some work with our water and sewer departments to clean up some of the, you know, the catch bases, the thing like that. We, and then we use some of our crews and we contracted out the ADA compliant crosswalks. But, I mean, that's a really big project. I know, you know, there's been some buzz about, you know, city sits on their hands and don't do anything. But right here is a small list, I'll come back next time with some more things that we've been doing, bringing money back to the community from the state and federal government. We're just wrapping up this community development block grant project out front where we put that ADA compliant ramp and some doors and some things like that on the building. And so we got a lot more fun things to come, but just wanted to make sure that we knew that we are all working hard to get money back to the community from whence it was sent. So thank you all for your letting me run off ahead for a little bit. I appreciate you indulging me. Any questions?
Just a comment, well said.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Director of Law.
Can I say one more thing? By the way, this little meeting next, this little meeting next week, that's a $15 million project, by the way, at this, at this point, estimated for that overpass on Town Street, which folks in the community have tried to get for, I don't know, the last 70 years. So pretty, another pretty exciting day to get this far, to have the public meeting on it. But, you know, $15 million, and we were one of the few communities chosen to have a really cool project like that, so, sorry.
Well, I guess if we're going to start trading some comments on it, Eric. I think that point's well taken. I think it exhibits the confidence that some of the other agencies above my pay grade are controlling this. Your federal, your state money, we're getting it. That shows that they must have some confidence in the direction this community's going. It's a point I'm trying to make. And number two along those lines, it's easy to sit here and it's easy to be a taxpayer and you hear about this stuff that's going to happen, and it doesn't happen tomorrow, and it's frustrating, but patience because the wheels of government turn so damn slow.
And we don't always talk about the ones that we apply for and don't get, but when we get them, we certainly, when we get them, we're going to crow about it a little bit. And it's been a little while since we've talked about some of these because they've been in the works. But, you know, there's not just stuff going on around us, we're doing stuff right here. Sorry.
Thank you. Finished?
I'm out.
Thank you. Director of Law.
Thank you.
I don't think she can follow that.
I know, mine isn't as exciting as the Safe Service Director. I guess it could result in money for our community. So in our old business, we, I talked to you a little bit about the PFAS class action settlement or current legislation last time. So after some further research, the, we've come up with a new law firm that we think would be a better fit for us. They're local to Northwest Ohio, they specialize in this area of law. So we think that the amended version of that legislation would be best for us. So at the appropriate time, I would ask for a motion to amend the, let's see, it's, this looks like the second-to-last in old business. I've asked for a motion to amend that legislation to reflect the ordinance that I sent out to everyone, just changing the legal representation. I am currently, I'm still, sorry.
What's the firm?
It's Doug, it's attorney Douglas Hanum. He is with Schumacher, and I believe they're based out of Toledo, they have a Toledo office.
Okay.
Yes, so they're, they're local. And I just totally lost my train of thought here. So, yeah, we, I am still working out the details with them. I have a phone conference set up with Mr. Hanum on Friday, so I will hopefully have more details for you all after that. And hopefully, a retainer document that I can send out to everyone for your approval before we pass this after the third, if you choose to pass it after the next reading.
I'm familiar with that firm.
Excellent.
Highly recommend him, very good.
Fabulous. We thought that would be a better fit. After doing some research, we weren't too sure. And again, I apologize for rushing into it and maybe relying a bit too much on the Ohio Municipal League and not doing our own research. So now I think this will be a good fit.
Got a question.
Yes.
We're using PFAS in kind of a general term there. So I guess, to the point, what companies are they going after?
So I've actually already started phase one of these class action suits with DuPont and 3M. There is, I'm, we have not, just to clarify again, as part of the submission process that I've already completed, we had to submit any test results, various informations on our, on our water treatment plant. There has been no detection. We've had no detection of PFAS. So it is below that level that EPA requires us to, to test for. So we don't have that. Now, it's this phase two that we have been identified as a potential community that might qualify for this phase two of the class action. So that's what I'm going to be talking to Mr. Hanum about. I've, again, I've started all of this process, we have the submission process started. There are special claims that are, that I've been looking at to, I have to submit those by the end of this week. But we haven't spent any money to remediate the PFAS because we haven't had any detected. So that's where we're at right now. As we, as we said before, PFAS is everywhere, virtually everywhere. It's not detectable in our water treatment plant, but there may be some in the future. So we still might qualify for some of the funds in case something comes up in the future.
And then it's, we're still talking, you know, we got it down to DuPont and 3M. Are we looking for particular chemicals?
Looking for PFOS and PFAS, PFOS and PFAS. And to pronounce those words, it takes a linguist. But then there are several components of those chemicals, and that's what you're looking for. And, and you're measuring in parts per billion.
Right.
Which is described as four drops of water into the rose bowl if it were full of water. So you're looking for minuscule parts. But there are chemical companies that have produced it in the past when they produce products like fire foam for fighting fires. So you've got 3M, Selenese.
DuPont.
DuPont. And DuPont just lost a state case in Delaware to the state of Delaware for several millions of dollars. But the first fund is already out there, and all we're doing is signing it up so that if, if they do awards, we'll get part of it like the opioid money. And if we don't get it done this year, we're out of luck, we can't get any of it.
Anything else for me?
Thank you. Director of Finance.
I have nothing to report.
Was there some of the legislation that was not suspended the last time that may need to be considered for that this time?
So we have second readings on the lease purchase agreement for the street sweeper, the second reading on the changes to the financial recovery plan, and a second reading on change to permanent appropriations. So if we could pass those items after the second reading, that would be appreciated. Then under new business, there is an ordinance to appropriate dollars that are in the fire donations fund that we would like pass suspending the three reading rule so the fire chief can get the items ordered related to using those fire donation funds. I pointed out at Finance Committee, that legislation does have a typo. It says $15,000 and a numerical 10. The correct amount is 10, so.
That's all been corrected in the legislation packets that were sent out this afternoon.
Yep.
So that will require no amendment because the portion that's been introduced on our docket this evening is correct. But thank you for bringing that forward again. All righty. That concludes the officer reports. We will move into the public comment portion. We have a representative from Columbia Gas that was asked to speak this evening, so we'll start with them.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for everyone having me tonight. I did make some copies of maps of our current projects, but you'll have to maybe share. I only made 10 copies, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get around for a second before I get started. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Megan Hunyer, that would be helpful. I'm out of practice, I haven't come to council in a while, so forgive me. My name's Megan Hunyer, I'm the Senior Public Affairs Specialist for Columbia Gas. I cover our Toledo and Lake Erie service territories. Familiar with Mayor and Service Director Eric over here, so they probably have lots of copies of these maps in their emails if they want to be skipped, so. So I'm here to talk about first, in your map packet there, our AMRP Center in Maine project, which is getting started this week. You're probably familiar with some of our AMRP projects, I know we've worked here in the area in the past. But essentially what we're doing, it's part of a 25-year state initiative to update all the infrastructure in the state. So every, every year, we have a few basically in certain territories, and we keep moving down the list. So what we're doing is replacing our old steel and cast iron pipe in the ground with the new plastic pipe. Just like any infrastructure, you know, the old steel mains have deteriorated over time, and the cost to maintain and repair them is more than the new modern pipe. The new pipe we're installing has several benefits. It has a longer lifespan, it has the ability to expand and contract, it can bend to the contour of the earth. And as a result, it will require less maintenance and upkeep in the future and ultimately is safer and more reliable for your natural gas services. So in terms of where I'll be working, I did pass out a map for everybody. We'll have about 129 customers on this project who'll be impacted. And in total, we'll be installing about 7,771 feet of new pipe. Our contractor on the project is Miller Pipeline. But Columbia Gas Supervisor will also always be on site as well. Feel free to stop and ask any questions to anyone you see or any ID from any of our employers or contractors. Now, I know it is difficult and it is cumbersome when we come into the communities. We certainly understand it's difficult. And I know people are always curious about different phases of the project because we do things in different time lapses. So the pre-construction work should already be done since we're getting started this week. That's when we go, we mark all our facilities and video everything underground and the entire construction path. That helps us ensure that we return everybody's property back to its pre-construction condition. Then the first phase is when we install the main line. This is the line that feeds all the homes and businesses in the project. The main line installation usually occurs on one side of a street, but in some scenarios, if we're trying to protect new pavement or new things like that, sometimes we do install on both sides of the street. When we can, we always try to directional bore under the ground, it's less invasive. But if we can't fully see under the ground, sometimes we do have to excavate and open cut just for safety reasons. When we install the main line, there is no disruption to gas service. Once that's in, then we move on to the service lines, that's a separate crew that come in. This process takes between two to four hours per home and a short service disruption when we replace the service line and move the meter outside if it hasn't already been moved outside. Once it's installed, we will reconnect the house or business to the new system and conduct a safety check and relight all appliances. Most of the concerns we usually get from customers on the project are the restoration. Everybody is always, you know, upset or worried about how their, how property will be put back together. I do want to stress, just to be patient with us, it does occur in phases. You may see, you know, stone or cold patch or things that are put back to keep things safe and accessible, but that's not the way that we will leave it. We will always, you know, reseed, do soft service restoration, asphalt or concrete, you know, we meet with the cities and make sure we're meeting all of the restoration guidelines. So that will happen, it just sometimes takes a few weeks down the road. So again, patience is what we always stress with that. So with that, I did want to share too, if you'll bear with me, I contacted our coordinator on the project for a real-time update. And he said that the contractors have started just beside the YMCA. Right now, they are trying to access all the buildings between West Center and West North Streets to verify existing gas meters for relocation to the outside. He did say there were a few businesses they were having trouble getting into, but we can contact them separately. He said everyone that they've contacted has been extremely cooperative and helpful. He said there was a small issue with getting water facilities located to prevent damage when excavating starts. So just need to follow up on some of those oops tickets, but all in all, it's going very well so far. So I thought you would appreciate that. And then the second packet, the second map in your packet, I just wanted to touch on real quick. We have a small blanket job that's starting next week on Columbus. So this is a smaller job than our advanced main replacement program. We'll have smaller ones if we know there's an existing leak that needs to be repaired. So on Columbus next week, we're going to be replacing about 850 feet of a leaking medium-pressure pipe along Columbus Avenue. So that one shouldn't take very long, but I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. So with that, any questions for me?
Megan, I have one question. The name and number provided in your, in your letter to, to those people affected, is Catherine Rosa, and she's on vacation next week?
She's on vacation this week right now.
Oh, this week?
Yes, she'll be back on Tuesday.
So if people have questions, do they still call the same number?
They, yes, they can. She forwards me voicemails if they need to be tended to. And then her email address also has an away message that goes to myself or Ben, so we're all covering while she's out.
Good.
But if you want to share my information as well, please feel free.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the Center and Main portion of the project, when are you going to be breaking ground for the actual excavation of, and doing your work? Like you spray painted it today, you marked it, but when are you digging? Just out of concern for the Latino Fest this weekend, I'm just curious if that's kind of.
Well, I will find out exactly on that. We shouldn't interfere with the festival at all. Sometimes the markings you see aren't always indicative of where we're going to be working, so.
Okay. They don't get onto Main Street at all, they're going down the alleys behind the stores on Main Street.
And I, and I did talk to the Miller Pipeline guys when they were looking over there, and they, we talked about anything that's going to be going on the next couple of weeks, and so they, they did know about the Latino Fest as well.
Great.
Oh, and we did meet a couple of years ago as well. I know parts of the project were paved pretty recently as part of the ODOT project. So we have devised a plan to, you know, mitigate the, the impact to those newly paved roads as well. So I didn't know if there was any other areas of concern, but I had South Street from Maine, First Alley, West of Wood, paved in 2023, I believe it was, so we have that notated, so.
We very much appreciate your cooperation and help on that.
Of course, we understand.
It was embarrassing for a while.
We get it, it's never fun for us to go into a newly paved road, we totally understand. So I'm glad we could meet and come to a, a good plan there.
And it, and just, just to catch up, I think we probably talked about it, City Council, we're, we ran into that a couple of times. We did reach out and we had a meeting right away, and we ended up with, like, I think your projected five-year plan. And so we are currently working on our next five-year plan, we'll probably.
Have another meeting?
Again, so we could take a look and compare before we start anything in 26. But appreciate, since that time, we've gotten along very well, so pretty happy about it.
We always try to stay ahead of it as much as we can, so we appreciate your cooperation also.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And just so council is aware, simultaneously with this meeting, there is a podcast going on where Columbia's guest is, is presenting the same thing via video meetings so that all of those people affected were notified of that meeting and could attend it virtually.
Yes. Yes, my counterpart Ben is hosting a virtual public meeting as we speak, so.
And all those residents were contacted?
Yes.
Yeah, we all received a letter, three pages, shows the map, gives the process, frequently asks questions. They've, they've been very. They've been very good in communicating with us.
And if we have email addresses on file, they've received some emails as well.
I'm just thrilled that you're getting out there and doing Columbus Avenue because at some point sometime, that one will get paved. Because it's kind of rough.
So we're ahead of that one then?
Yeah, you bet. You tear it up first, fix it later.
Got it. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much.
Continue with the public portion. We have Deb Tyson's requested time to speak, so we just ask you to limit your time to ten minutes or less.
Deb Tyson, eight hundred Woodward Avenue, Lot Nine. I have a couple of things. Chaplain Mandy Riddling had passed a Thursday back and so I was going to present something about grief share that Good Shepherd has, but we've had to postpone that even though we need it very much. I have some concerns about the things I've already heard tonight. So the first one is, we're having a meeting Tuesday at the Learning Center for the public. And if people actually show up like they should, the ones that are, you know, complaining whatever, how are they going to accommodate them? Because I've been to even where they had like the front open or whatever. I know they have some rooms where they can make it bigger or whatever, but just that was kind of a concern. This ODOT thing, I'd like a number to ODOT because this is like when you guys get handed something that you didn't, right here, right now, and you're supposed to vote on it. It's no different than that's way, and I'm not the only one that feels this way, but I'm talking about the traffic light out here, but I'm just using it as an example. And if the state is actually the one that's making the decisions and you guys are just following, which that's okay. I think the citizens need to know that. And I've seen about the water treatment plan. It's good that we don't really have a problem and that we're on top of it. And now we come to Columbia Gas that I just heard, and they're talking about Columbus Avenue. We already only, some of us only have Columbus Avenue to get out from that area of town. So if they're going to do a project while ODOT's doing their Lidle Street project, I see a big problem because they're not, I called ODOT and they don't have, even though it's supposed to be the end of the month that they're supposed to be done, they're not sure of that yet. So there's not going to be a way for traffic to go otherwise. That's going to really impede people from tiffin, it's going to impede anybody on that end. Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deb. This time we'll open up to other members of the public that are here this evening. We ask that you just state your name for the record, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Paul Allison, one eighteen and a half, West Center Street, Apartment Two. I'm part of the Columbia Gas project where I live that I will be part of that. Oh, okay, since I mentioned in the last two meetings, the Records Commission meeting is this Thursday at two P.M. The members of the Records Commission, if I haven't said, are the mayor, the finance director, the law director, and myself. I'm the citizen member, and I'm the secretary. I wonder how I got that job. Anyway, I want to talk a little bit about the farmer's market. I'm a little bit displeased. We used to have twenty-five to thirty people or, you know, people in the project. And this time, when I went this Saturday, we were lucky if we had fifteen. And we don't have any produce to speak of, and it's a farmer's market, and we should have produce. We got a lot of craft people there, but we don't have much produce. And the pie people didn't even show up this time, so I couldn't get my red raspberry pie. So and then there was nothing else in the farmer's market that I had much interest in. And I'm afraid that it seems to be, it doesn't seem to be what it used to be, and it needs to be worked on so we get more produce there and more people, as a matter of fact. You know, I've been a regular goer to the farmer's market for years and years, and I'm displeased to see that it hasn't worked out this summer, particularly as to produce because there hasn't been any produce. So hopefully we can get, we can work at it so that next year, well, we got one more meeting, the third Saturday in September. It's the last one of this year's farmer's market, but hopefully by next year, we can work at getting more produce. And, you know, the craft people are fine to a point, but if you call it a farmer's market, you should have produce. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Any other members of the public wish to address council at this time? Sure.
Megan Hunyer, Columbia Gas. I forgot to mention how long both projects would last. So the Center and Main Project is slated to be about three months. That should go into October. But the Columbus one, the small repair that I mentioned before, that should only take about eight or nine business days. We have it projected to finish on September fifth. And then I did want to stress also that we will always make sure roads are accessible, driveways are accessible. Traffic will always be able to get through, so I just wanted to bring those up as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last call for any other members of the public who wish to address council. Seeing none, we'll move into old business.
The first ordinance.
Oh yeah, the first ordinance is remaining tabled at this time.
An ordinance to adopt pursuant to Section nine one one point zero one dash nine one one point zero two of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, the petition to vacate an unnamed alley in the fourth ward of the city of Fostoria.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Cassidy to adopt this ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Lake?
Yes.
That does pass and becomes ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five six.
A resolution authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Public Service and Safety acting as agent of the city of Fostoria to execute and deliver to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation all necessary instruments to effect a good and sufficient conveyance of parcel of land from the city of Fostoria to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation in the vicinity of Ohio Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
That passes and becomes resolution number twenty twenty-five dash five seven.
An ordinance authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Finance to apply for financing and enter into a lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement, if applicable, for a new street sweeper for the city of Fostoria and declaring an emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Lehman to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. It is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five eight.
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the twenty twenty-five financial recovery plan for the city of Fostoria and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
I have Podak. So I have a motion by Podak, second by Mendoza to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance does pass. It's ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five nine.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one zero five, permanent twenty twenty-five appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the general fund and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Grine to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
If that ordinance passes, it's ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash six zero.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law to enter into a contract for legal representation in order to seek funds for PFAS forever chemicals, water testing, and remediation for potentially contaminated water in the city of Fostoria and declaring emergency to exist.
Do we have a motion to amend that one to adopt the current language? Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Who is, Bob? Okay. So we have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Podak to adopt or to, sorry, to amend the ordinance to reflect the current wording on the legal representation. So as written in your current packet, but replacing the previous packet. So clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
This ordinance has been amended, and that constitutes the second reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fostoria, Ohio and declaring emergency.
And that was the second reading of that ordinance. That concludes old business, and we will move into new business.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs to execute contracts as required and declaring emergency to exist.
That is the first reading of that resolution.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one zero five, permanent twenty twenty-five appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the fire donation fund and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All right, that carries. It becomes ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash six one. That does conclude new business. Is there any need to go into executive session this evening? I do have some miscellaneous business. I know others do as well. So I'll kick it off with, I would like to appoint councilperson Grine to the Parks and Rec Board. It was something that I should have done a few weeks ago. As we passed the Park and Rec Board's creation, there is a stipulation within that that states the council president will appoint a council member for that board. So I will appoint councilmember Grine since he's currently not serving on any other committees at this time. So that has been done. He accepted. I can ask for your formal acceptance out loud now if you don't mind, councilperson Grine.
I accept.
Perfect. Done. And I'll have some more miscellaneous after you do yours because it goes with yours.
Oh, okay. Well, as I mentioned during the Finance Committee minutes, the committee has moved to suspend their meeting on November eighteenth, which would typically be at five thirty because there is a need to hold a budget work session with council. And if my memory serves me correctly, the Finance Director believed five thirty would be an adequate time. So I would propose if council is available to hold a budget work session November eighteenth at five thirty prior to the regular meeting at six P.M.
So we do have that motion. I'd like to add a caveat to just start the council meeting at the conclusion or six o'clock, whichever is later.
Very good.
Is that right?
Whichever comes.
Whichever comes first. No, that can't be right. Whichever's later, I think is correct. So if it's six oh five, we'll start then. If it's five fifty-five, we'll start at six P.M., but.
Yes.
That was one of the caveats. So do we have a second on that motion?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion by Lehman, a second by Cassidy to have that meeting on November eighteenth with council to follow at the conclusion of that meeting or six o'clock, whichever one.
Later.
Six o'clock being the, is later. So clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, so that is what we will do. The other piece, just as an announcement, because I don't think I need a motion for this, is that we have Election Day coming up, so we might as well think far enough in advance instead of the private, previous meeting since we're already doing this. Just to say that the meeting will be on November fifth on Wednesday. It'll be following Election Day. So we'll have our council meeting November fifth at six o'clock. Any other miscellaneous business this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is that Lake?
Yeah.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I didn't know if you guys wanted to leave or not. We have a motion by Lake, a second by Cassidy to adjourn. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned at six fifty P.M.